Oh, Victor's up. We'll call the meeting to order and start with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Riddell.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Gallagher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. And as the name hearing implies, this is, this is the opportunity to be heard and the opportunity to speak. And as part of our process, we will start with the, with hanging up the phone. And then we will, we will ask the sheriff and staff to go through their presentation for the folks.
Well, no, we did sign in to say we wish to speak today.
We probably need to read this.
We did.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll let, you want to do that?
Let me do it. Okay.
If you give us a minute here, just.
Today's first public hearing for the sales tax for the purpose of providing and supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorain County for a continuing period, an increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to a higher revised code section 5739.021 by the rate of one quarter of 1%, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to a revised code section 5739.026 by the rate, by the rate of one quarter percent of 1% for Lorain County Sheriff's Office operations.
Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of this quarter percent proposal. I'd like to first go over, I have a nice PowerPoint for you. I'd like to first go over for the public, the overview of the sheriff's office responsibilities so that we can all make certain that we are aware of the depth of the responsibility of the sheriff's office and all it entails. Sheriff is responsible for maintaining public peace. Sheriffs are responsible for preserving the peace within their county. Countywide jurisdiction, sheriff has the authority to enforce laws throughout the entire county, including within municipalities, townships, and villages. The sheriff is the highest authority in law enforcement within the county. Traffic law enforcement, sheriffs and their deputies enforce traffic laws, including those related to drunk driving. Criminal investigation, the sheriff is responsible for investigating crimes and accidents, working with other law enforcement agencies when necessary. Court services, the sheriff shall provide service and security for courts, serve legal documents, subpoenas, warrants, et cetera, and transport inmates to and from the court. And jail operations, the sheriff manages the county jail, ensuring the safety and security of inmates. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the sheriff to discuss some of the changes that have occurred since January.
Dear Board of Commissioners, one of the things that we want to bring to your attention is that many of you have already noticed that we have done a significant change in the organization of Lorain County Sheriff's Office. Prior to January 6th of 2025, the law enforcement division of the sheriff's office had a captain, which also comprised of another captain heading operations, a captain for corrections, two majors in the task force, and also a chief deputy. With that in mind, we kept the same amount of personnel in there with our chief deputy, but however, due to eliminating the captain rank in the sheriff's office, the majors were brought in to level out the organization. We have a major now patrol and training operations, a major of the major crimes task force, a major of special operations and intelligence, and then we combined corrections, civil division, and courts underneath one supervisor and a major who oversees that. In addition to that, a major which is a new position for title but not position for the budget was a major of community and media outreach. That major is also responsible for the wellness of our corrections officers and deputies within the sheriff's office as well. This reorganization was significant and important due to the fact is, is that we saw a significant situation in which there was a lacking service to road patrol and the residents of Lorain County. The captains positions which were eliminated, both of those positions were moved to road patrol. The lieutenants, we removed one from administration, the other was moved to road patrol. Sergeants, three supervising, no personnel at all. They were moved to road patrol to be able to supervise shifts out there. And the township impact unit, which we had two deputies dedicated to that, were removed from administrative services and they were moved to road patrol. One of the issues in regards to the township impact officers that was brought up, I was actually approached by a resident in the IGA on Royalton Road the other day that came up to shake my hand that said that he was actually on the phone with 911 when somebody was attempting to break into his shed in his backyard. He said he had lived in Eaton Township for 40 years and for the first time saw a deputy arrive on scene while he was still on the phone with the 911 operator, describing the individuals that were inside his shed. He said another thing he hadn't seen in 40 years. A second deputy showed up within three minutes after the first deputy had shown up. A foot chase ensued, they had taken off through the neighborhoods. No one was apprehended in that situation, but the resident said, "For the first time, my stuff was actually, remained in my custody and in my shed in my yard." And he was very grateful to that, to see deputies actually on the road in the neighborhoods, which he hasn't seen the presence of this since living in Eaton Township for nearly four decades. With that also, our task force, so far in 2024, they had 17 cases, which had minimal enforcement and prosecution of those cases. And because of that, we generated nearly $390,000 in grant money in the prior years. Because of the work level of the task force, we lost almost all of that and it went down to under $150,000. We are attempting now to, our workload's, to take that back up to the $390,000 previous levels. So since that, all of 2024, they had 17 cases, but they had 50 new cases since January 6th. Seven were indicted on state warrants and two were indicted on federal charges. Three search warrants, actually that's increased since then, have been executed and 1,650 pounds of drug seized, that is now over 2,000 pounds of drug seized from the time that we wrote these slides a couple of weeks ago. We're very, very happy with what our intelligence and drug task force has done. The major crimes task force, which is split between human trafficking, the Northern Border Initiative, and the Public Corruption Unit. We now have had two illegal massage parlors in Lorain County that have been shut down. Another illegal massage parlor in HEAL, which is the Huron-Eary-Ashland-Lorain County Task Force Initiative, that was shut down. And currently, right now, we have two human trafficking, racketeering, influence corrupt organization investigations going. The Northern Border Initiative, that we work with drug smuggling cases with the DEA. We have several of those cases working right now and illegal immigrants have been identified and deported with criminal activity, just involved with drugs, forward deported on that. And we also had an illegal immigrant from Thailand who was deported because he and his brother were wanted for a murder case in Thailand and that they were turned over to Immigration and Customs Enforcement. And right now with our Public Corruption Unit, we have 10 active cases for public corruption that have been reported to us and there's actual, some meat to those cases to move forward on with the prosecutor's office. One of the biggest things that we're most proud of as well too, and this is underneath the major who oversees community outreach and officer wellness. We instituted a grant-funded mental health program for our employees. Recently, we had a sergeant that had retired, he had passed away in the corrections division of the office. The immediate next day, our chaplain was in to visit all of the corrections officers and staff of the agency. We also had our peer counseling and our psychiatrists in to also review and assist with all of the dealing with the grief that had happened from the employee that passed away. We reinstituted a formal chaplain program and that chaplain is also now assigned to the Buckeye State Sheriff's Association Chaplaincy Program to formalize the actual work and service that that chaplain does with the sheriff's office in compliance with state guidelines set up by the Buckeye State Sheriff's Association. In recruitment and retention, prior to January 6th, we had some officers being recruited and retained. And as we were just the focus of a Channel 19 and Chronicle Telegram article, we had a situation with one of our corrections officers that used to be a deputy in Huron County. I'm here to say that that's particular situation that happened, happened in another county while that deputy was a law enforcement officer located in that county. He is a corrections officer with us and has actually done a very good job with us as a corrections officer, but we realize what has happened in his past and that we have not planned on putting him on the road as he requested underneath his law enforcement commission. We know there's optics, we have a certain image that we need to maintain, not only for the sheriff's office, but for all of Lorain County. With that in mind, when we look at our current applicants for recruitment right now, we have 200 applicants for the corrections, civil, and court division that have come in since January 6th. Very high quality talent that we have been able to look at and pick from other departments that have been able to come in there. People with good character, people with good backgrounds that we've been able to do that, we've changed the image on that. In addition to that, nearly 73 applications for deputy sheriff have come in and 40 of those were lateral transfers, which means those are officers from other agencies that look to come to Lorain County Sheriff's Office because they're now looking at as a destination agency. With that in mind though, and speaking with our supervisors and our field training staff, we're not always interested in a lateral transfer officer, even though some of them bring experience. We want to make sure that we have new officers that bring a livelihood of a long career with Lorain County Sheriff's Office and to serve the public of Lorain County and to mold them into the culture in which we expect to operate at the sheriff's office. On our daily operations, our patrol activities before January of 2025, and I know I've complained about this before, folks, we had a road supervisor and three deputies covering nearly 495 square miles of Lorain County. That has changed now to a road supervisor, now either a sergeant or lieutenant because they've been moved from inside the operation to the road and now five to seven deputies per shift that are working throughout the county. Everybody that worked a Monday through Friday shift of eight to four o'clock in the afternoon, there were five, they have been reassigned to road patrol to make sure that we serve. We bring this up, members of the board and members of the public who may be watching this, because we were able to do this right now on the current budget and the current staffing that we have now. We're not done for what the actual needs and the assessments that we've done for the course of the last six months. And I'm going to turn this back over to Chief Sack, but I just wanted to remind all three commissioners and anybody watching and anybody in the public today that I believe that we have been extremely good stewards of the public's money, what we've been able to do and increase the efficiencies within the Lorain County Sheriff's Office. Chief Sack's going to break down the specifics of what we're looking at now for the 2026 budget.
Thank you, Sheriff. So the big question for the public is what the overall budget comparison from '25 to '26 is. When we walked into the office in January, we had no say so in what this year's budget was. We were handed no history and we basically started on a wing and a prayer and we made the best of what we, we could. We've come back to the commission at least once and had discussions about bills that were hanging over. So the initial budget had to be increased by that $276,000, I believe the total figure was. So in 2025, the total budget between jail and sheriff's office, so we just call it one sheriff's office, was $31,232,398. Now, we've gone halfway through the year, I check every month to make certain that we are on track and we are. I can tell you that I make one phone call to Casey Saunders and he makes certain that I am within the percentage that I should be of using my budget and utilizing the funds as we should be. And I am forecasting for '26. With that, '26's budget is expected to be, because of the programs that the sheriff has planned to implement to also save money in the long run, $35,500,000. To explain the increases in those general fund line items, we had $500,000 in leases for '25 and '26. In '25, there was no allowance for the leases that were already scheduled. There was no additional, in addition in that line item for us to forecast. So I have maneuvered some funds from one line item to another, made some cuts where they needed to be made so that I could make certain that we can afford those vehicles that we ordered this year, that you approved earlier this year. 2025 lease costs were omitted from that budget. Bulletproof vests, every officer, every deputy receives a bulletproof vest every five years. The warranty lasts five years, that's all the manufacturer will allow us. So they have to be rotated. I'm not certain why 67 of them are due at one time, but 67 of them are due in '26. At a cost of $2,500 to $3,000 each, you can see that that is a good chunk of supplies and that's where that is kept, under equipment and supplies. Jail medication. The jail medication is probably my most problematic issue this year. We had a budget of $500,000 for jail medication and started the year with every month, I saw $87,000 to $88,000 a month for jail medication. I found that when we did some research, we were on a contract that had expired with CorrectRx and that was costing us about 40% more than the state bid prices. So we have since worked with the state and with the prosecutor's office to approve a contract to move back to the state funded numbers, so we saved 40%. But overall, that budget this year is going to take me far higher than $500,000. And I'm hoping as soon as I get to where I know we're going to be back to the state funded numbers, I can give you a total for that year, but already I've gone over the $500,000. So that was a, that's a big number and that is a big amount of money that we were not anticipating. If I had kept on the track without moving to a different provider, we would be over almost a million dollars. So almost double what was funded for the year, what was allocated for that. The jail and general budget staffing costs, this is an area that the sheriff talked about for, from, before he was elected and then starting in January, one of the musts was that we had to have jail medical hires for liability compliance. For all shifts, you have to have at least one RN working, that's a requirement. And that's about $500,000. We've already done that, we've hired them. That was an immediate need, it was pressing, it was probably at the top of the list. And there was a 3% raise for all staff, that is to be included in next year's cost. That was contractual, done by collective bargaining agreement before we came here. Next year is a year for negotiations and we will be sitting at the table with all of the bargaining units to go over what is foreseeable for them and what, you know, what we can do for one another in his way, in the way of increases. The needs, we're a new prisoner transport team. That's something that I know that the sheriff wants to speak on. It is armed corrections officers to transport prisoners. I think we have discussed it in the past, but we spend almost a million dollars holding onto prisoners that are not ours. Why do we do that? Because they're either summoned from another jail or another prison facility because they're needed in court here and then trying to get them back to their own facility is difficult because we do not have officers to, or transport teams to take them back. We don't have deputies that are free to just transport them. So that was a plan of the sheriff's to be able to save those funds because if you're looking at the housing costs of them, it's three quarters of a million to a million dollars. But then when you look at the medical costs and the costs that are associated with that, that are not just the day-to-day, almost a hundred dollars a day per prisoner. You're also looking at overtime costs for COs. You're looking at all of the benefits that go with that overtime cost for a CO. You're looking at medical, dental, and counseling costs. All of those things are, all play into that large number that costs us to hold other people's prisoners when we are done with them in our court system. And 11 road and court deputies, so that's about $900,000. When I go to that transport team, it's about 1.57 million, but it saves automatically off the top $750,000 in costs annually and then we add all those numbers back that I just discussed. I made you a nice pie chart so that we can all take a look at what the costs are for personnel. I think everybody would know that the most expensive part of your budget is obviously the personnel costs themselves, but we also have to add in hospitalization, we have to add in PERS and there are different rates depending on what that particular deputy or employee, what part of the pension fund they are part of, life insurance and Medicare and workman's comp. And then the line items, so that you can see where the majority of our money is spent. That large blue section is the vehicles. Vehicles are always going to cost. If we had to replace every vehicle every year, we would be looking at a lot more than what we're paying right now in leasing. So in leasing, the maximum amount we should ever get to is about $980,000 for a full cycle of vehicles and then that would be a known number going forward, or at least very close to that because we've replaced every vehicle and we hit a cycle. After we've hit that cycle of four to five years, we can then say we're starting over again, trading in those vehicles, getting some cost back from that. There is actually a formula that is used by our vehicle service operator and he uses that formula and an entire breakdown for each vehicle to see whether or not that car is worth saving, can we use it as a backup car? We don't have deputies that have take-home vehicles until they're off probation, so we do have to have some that rotate. We have auxiliaries that use them, we have some that need to be there in case of an emergency breakdown of another vehicle. So we do have some, a few spares, but they're older cars that we keep on the fleet just to make certain they're there. And this one is the breakdown between 2025, which is in blue, and 2026, which is in orange. You can see that the increases in the line items or personnel expenses, that's the place that you're looking at the most and that is that transport team that we are talking about to get us up and running. To make certain we have the most deputies that we possibly can on the road so that we're not taking a deputy from the road to help at the court, which is required right now, to make certain that we have armed deputies that are coming from corrections in order to transport these prisoners back and forth and I'm getting the maximum amount of law enforcement on the road on the daily so that our citizens have the most protection that they can have. And bottom line is, we're talking about a quarter percent tax increase. And what does that, you know, 2.25% cost the end user? On a hundred dollars, it's a quarter. So if I'm looking at this overall, for us to have our own sustainable budget, for us to never have to look and say, "Well, it depends on whether or not this particular," no offense to the commissioners here, but if in case we move forward and there's some that don't like us so much, whether or not they are as invested as we are, we don't have to worry that any of that is political. This is done because it's the right thing to do, because it's statutorily required and because we are good stewards of our own money. Sheriff, did you want to speak on the transport team?
Yes, commissioners, in regards to the transport team, one of the biggest issues that we've seen facing us in regards to personnel costs involve deputies being taken off the road to sit at a hospital with an inmate. Sometimes two deputies have to sit with an inmate at a hospital. So therefore, that's overtime due to the 12-hour shifts that we are on now. Then it's very difficult then to fill the next shift or find somebody that we have to hold over. We've already spoken with the administration of Lorain County Common Police Court and had talked to Judge Cook as well about this, Judge Bremke also. We discussed this in regards to orders of the court that we immediately return back to. Any straight prisoner or other facility, an inmate that we have in our custody, until such time, their presence is required back by the court again to be able to save there. Judges are also in line with that too, to be able to do that. Every time we send somebody to the hospital, we're paying for their medical care, psychiatric care, pharmacy costs, et cetera, that we have to pick up the cost for that and also the overtime. And so therefore, by having a dedicated transport team to be able to do that, like other counties do, such as Cuyahoga, they have one as well, that will actually reduce that cost in regards to overtime, the medical cost, the prescription drug cost, et cetera, to be able to do that. So that is actually, though we're adding personnel, that is a very key element of lowering the overall operating cost of the sheriff's office by eliminating those expenses to be able to do that.
Thank you, Sheriff. Lastly, I just want to thank you for your time, commissioners. I know that this is an important topic to all of us. I think that this is a long-term answer for this issue. I think that this has been a long time coming and I also believe that we are to be trusted with this as a good steward. I think I've shown from January on that I am more than willing to sit down and go over any item that's within my budget to see where, where that money is going and what it's being used for. Where the sheriff believes in transparency, as well do I. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. And know that.
Don't be running away from the podium.
Well, and for the staff that's here, know that this board has been very determined and we consider this the last piece, getting the sheriff's office.
Saves himself a dollar.
Saved myself a buck there. So, but we've done with the, with the radio towers and connecting up with the other, other emergency staff and offices, we've greatly improved 9/11, 911 so that, you know, the staffing there is up to speed and, and the sheriff's department is a very important piece of the public safety. So it, you know, we feel very strongly that this is all part of a larger, larger situation and unfortunately, in past, in past boards and over the, over the past decades, there's been an approach that fragments out some of those, some of those issues and treats them separately at the expense of others. So we're just trying, we're just trying to make sure that when we say public safety, we really mean public safety.
Mr. Riddell, also to answer that, some of the other questions we have, the chief has here, many, you know, spreadsheets, documents that we put together over the course of the last six months. We were not given this luxury when we came into office. We got documentation from the commissioners, Casey Saunders. We also had our own separate software that we were using, I think it was QuickBooks or Quicken, that was not in alignment with the software Oracle that was being used by the county. There were discrepancies between accounts, accounts that were not created, revenue accounts that we didn't know existed immediately. And in addition to that, going over this budget and also our special accounts that we have for what are called the cash drawer accounts legally by the state auditor, that has to do with our inmate commissary accounts, our law enforcement drug accounts and our other special accounts that we have is that there was accounting in which we had a checkbook and it was handwritten into, you know, the register every single checkbook and then that wasn't necessarily aligning with what was in Oracle and coming out and being reported in your system too. So even though we almost had two sets of books that we had to go through and make sure that they were in alignment with what the auditor's office was actually reporting to the state of Ohio. We knew that there were some shortages there, we've met with the auditor currently, the state auditor, to be able to go over those numbers because I know they're finishing the audit for Lorain County. We had to make sure that we self-reported what our findings were in those special accounts as well too, but it has not been an easy process over the last six months to make sure that we had every dime accounted for. We knew you were asking for this public hearing, in addition that this additional sales tax would be going onto the ballot in November. And we've done our best to bring you the best numbers that we can with the limited amount of data that was provided and left for us.
Thank you. Other, other questions?
I have a comment. I noticed that there are more sheriff's deputies on the road. And I commend you for it. It's, you know, safety is very important to this county. Thank you for the tour of the jail last week. I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about what no one wants to talk about, which are taxes. Okay, that's what this is. Casey, I kind of, I don't think you saw my text. I'm texting you saying I'm gonna call you up, so, and now he's looking at it. Okay. So what, what, as a, as a commission, we have to vote and submit a, I don't want to say preliminary budget. What's the word? The tax budget by, what's the date, August? Yeah, so July, by July 20th, we have to submit that budget, which is for 2026. We only have six months under our belts and for some reasons we're not going to talk about, we're having a hard time getting our numbers right now to be current. Casey's doing a great job right now with the strains that are being put on him. So in July, we're going to be voting on the 2026 budget with a lot of guesstimations, I call it. Okay? That budget is going to be interesting because as we have learned, we have a sheriff that really entered, and his team that understands the finances, which has been refreshing here, in that we get 13.7 million in a quarter percent sales tax for the jail only. Now, if we were going to pass a sales tax for a quarter percent to help out the jail and that failed, we would actually lose that quarter percent. So looking at his budget and their budget, which they performed and quite well and itemized it, it's $32 million or $31 million, as you said, okay? That's the number. We, our budget last year was about 86, I think roughly. And we were pretty much, thanks to the money that we received from the federal government, that kind of held us over for the last couple of years. The fact of the matter is, two weeks before I took office in 2020, the outgoing administration took away a quarter percent sales tax. And we can debate that for a long time on why they did it. That cost this county $65 million over the last five years that this county should have had. Now, I could make the argument to say this, we did quite well based on that. We did quite well keeping expenses in line. Everybody, as we, in 2024, Casey finally implemented the, the new budget request forms, itemized budgets that we have finally worked on for 2025. So what's going to happen now in July is we'll be using that, those numbers. And I don't have to worry about the sheriff's office because you guys have your numbers in line. Casey's told me in the past that most of the people that submit their budgets, the other elected officials, except for one, was very clear and they really fell in line with how we want to see our numbers. You, you just fixed the number one that we had the issue with. So now I feel real comfortable on what your office has been doing. And I feel real comfortable knowing that we're in a bad way for next year. And we're, we are, we are, we don't have that number yet. I'm projecting five to seven million. But again, we don't have the real numbers and what's going to be passed in our July 20th meeting or whatever date that will be. But I felt, what's that?
July 15th.
July 15th, okay, well, that's official now. It'll be July 15th will be the meeting in which we have to pass that budget. And we're going to take a look at that budget and we're gonna, we're gonna basically have to, I don't like to use the word assume, but we're gonna have to take a look at what that budget's gonna look like for 2026. And in the meantime, cause some people have asked me, it's like, you know, why are you doing this? Why are you doing this? Because when I ran, I said, I'm gonna let you, the public, make that decision. And if I wasn't a sitting commissioner here and the county commissioner said, we need a quarter percent. And I was here before, I'd say, no way I'd support that. Because I don't trust the board to make that decision because that turns over and over. But if I know that that money's going to law enforcement and going to your, your department, then I'm gonna feel a lot more comfortable and I would support that. Now, I, I mean, I saw over the years, the past 25 years, because I really feel for Phil Stometty. Cause I've seen some of the gammanship that this board did to our sheriff's office. And they would use them as political tools in order to get certain things done. I heard about it, I've seen it. And that's why I, when you said what you said in a more professional way, I'm more crayon writing kind of guy. But basically, by trying to, when you say taking politics out of the position, which means you'll have your own revenue stream so you can operate how you're operating now. Now, is it enough to cover it all? No. But alleviates the pressure for us. If we're gonna have a deficit, you know, it's gonna help us out with the deficit. But I think when you say it takes the politics out of your office, that's what that means. That the public will be able to support your local sheriff, right? That's what we're asking the public today. And that's what you're asking us to support it. So what's gonna happen next is we're gonna have a public meeting today. We're gonna have another public meeting on Friday. And then I believe, you know, all of us, those that support the sheriff's office should be out there educating the public on the why and the need. And that's what I think, but this is why we're doing it now, so that we can actually get the, we have certain dates we have to get it done by. We have to vote on it to make sure it can be on the ballot so you, the public can say yes or no. And that's the option that this board is gonna allow you to do, to say yes or no, that you support this type of rev, this type of attacks that goes solely for our law enforcement community here. And so that, that's my, my spiel on some little bit of the history. And I think this board has done an excellent job considering what was thrown at us. You know, and I'm not counting about just us three, but the last, you know, five years. You know, it was a total of $65 million in revenue that was taken away. We did receive $60 million in ARPA funds, but that money was used specifically for certain things only. So we've done a great job. And last year it was short, but we kind of felt, plugged some holes. But we're, we're running out. We're not gonna be able to plug holes anymore. So this is a huge opportunity, I believe, for our public to at least take that sales tax and let it not be used for general fund as a whole, but for law enforcement. And that's kind of how I thought this would make more sense. That's my speech, I guess, you know? And I think we might have to have a little bit more financial details, maybe for Friday's morning, or Friday's meeting, maybe. What do you, I mean, all this is a big picture stuff we talked about.
Whatever it is you need, I have.
I know, it's just, I know Casey, you did get, remember we had the breakdown about in April? That we got from the sheriff's office? I think that would be something that we should probably use. If you don't mind working with Casey and seeing how we can do a PowerPoint with that. I know he's horrible to work with, but I mean, I think if we could do that, maybe for a Friday, Friday meeting to go into more detail, light item, I think that would be beneficial for the public.
Happy to do whatever it is you need, Commissioner.
Well, that just gives you what my thoughts are and why.
Well, I want the public to have as much information as they need to make an educated choice.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you. And please stick around. We have some folks that I think are going to want to speak and perhaps have a couple of questions.
Excellent, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
So is there somebody in the audience that would like to speak, either give an opinion? Please come to the, to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Good morning.
Good morning, afternoon.
I can't hear myself.
Good afternoon.
Patricia Bark, 8717 Mosswood Circle, North Ridgeville. I love the presentation. Note, I support my sheriff's office. Give you my license plate number. I'm sitting here with petitions to eliminate property tax. I'm gonna go in to vote on this issue being in the ballot. As a citizen, I'm wondering what the mindset is going to be of the voters. We're all riled up about property tax. And how does that work in our psyche to see an increase in the sales tax? So I don't know how that's gonna turn out. Why does it have to be an increase in the sales tax? What work has been done? And I don't understand all the accounting stuff and all that that goes on. I keep going back to zero-based budgeting. What can, is there, do we, is there any slushy money somewhere? Is there any technology that can save money? Is, do we have too many people somewhere? Do we have people misplaced or? I don't know how Doge is working, but those are things I've heard with how Doge works, okay? To sell this to the public, those issues have to be addressed, I think. Because just going, going around with this petition, it's very frustrating, which you probably already know, dealing with people. They don't know what's going on half the time. They don't know when there was even a vote this last time we voted. They're upset, but they don't get involved and that's what really bugs me. How many, how many people are here? Okay, I sent out, I live in a development. So I know people on two of the cul-de-sacs. So that was at least 20 people that I sent out the notice about this meeting. And I'm like, they're gonna raise your taxes, you want to get involved? I haven't heard back anything. I don't know who's gonna show up to vote. Will this be in November? I don't know who's gonna show up to vote. I don't know what they're gonna know about it, the ones that do. Some of them, they don't even know in a primary if they're Democrats or Republicans. I work the polls. The wife looks at the husband, oh, what ballot do I want? Really? Anyway. It's such an important thing. But I guess all I'm saying is, we need, as a voter, I need some step-by-step understanding of how this can be managed. We think there's gotta be money, there is slushy money somewhere, there can be cuts somewhere. Can we cut something somewhere? And why does it have to be, why does this particular thing have to be a increase to the sales tax? That part I didn't get.
I'd like to address that if you, if you wish. And in the overall scheme of things, schools and charities like the Mars Board and those kinds of things that do social services, they run, they run on real estate taxes. And that's the, that's the, just the, the culture of, of our country. The cities run on income taxes. And the county runs on sales tax. Although we do get a little bit of money from about, I think there's about 17 million out of our 80 some million dollar budget that does come from real estate taxes inside village. But the bulk, our, our main tax revenue is the sales tax. And that's just the way things are divided so that you're, you know, different, different institutions have different funding mechanisms. And the voters have been very, how do I, very disciplined about, you know, several times, income taxes have been proposed for school districts and they've been voted down because they wanted, they want them to stay in their lane with the real estate tax. They don't want to pay an income tax to a school board and the city where they live at the same time. So that's why a sale, that's why we look at the sales tax. That is, that is the, the revenue stream that we have allocated for us. When you say, you know, raising the taxes, I think an important issue is that we had, as, as Commissioner Moore said, we had a quarter percent that was, that was reduced in 2020, correct? And a lot of theories on motivation, but the point is it was reduced. And that would have had a severe impact. You know, if you take $13 million out of a, out of a $75 million budget, I think you can see, you know, what the cuts would have to be. And, and those things that would result in less services. We, we lucked out because the federal government decided to pump money into the economy during COVID. And we replaced that quarter percent with, with 10 million a year or so of ARPA dollars. And that money, that money runs out this year. The last of it is being spent this year. So that means we've got to go back to living without the, without the ARPA money and living without the quarter percent that was reduced in 2020. And, and if, and our motivation for putting it on is that we're, we, we've been at this for a while. This is Commissioner Moore's third term. It's my first and, and Commissioner Gallagher's first. But we've got enough, we've been through the budget process. This will be our third year. And we're satisfied that, that there's prudence and responsibility in spending the, the public tax money. But the, the reduction of 13 million, now that there's no ARPA and no sales tax, that reduction of 13 million would be painful for a lot of the people that are beneficiaries of the services we provide and that the taxpayers originally have said, as a county, we want to provide this. Whether, whether it be, you know, law enforcement, whether it be children's services, all those kinds of things that we do. And I think that, I think you're correct about the voter and their mentality. And history has shown us for the last decade or so that it's more, nobody likes taxes. But they're more palatable when they are dedicated taxes. And what we're, what we're doing this time with the quarter percent, instead of just dumping it into the general fund and say, trust us, we'll spend it well. You know, we're actually allocating it to the sheriff's office and staff and the services that they provide. And so I think, I think voters should take some comfort in that, that that's, you know, they'll be able to actually see where that money is going and what it's for.
And if I may add, you know, the, you know, we actually have the ability, and I don't like to use this word, but levy. We had the ability to do that. But the tack, the homeowners of this county has been hit so hard over the last two years that we felt that the office of the sheriff is better represented when everyone participates in paying that tax. And that's what a sales tax is. It's a user tax, you know? If you, I, I'm, we are all, homeowners are all angry right now, rightfully so. And we felt that if we were to do a sheriff's office only levy on just people who own real estate, we did not feel that was a fair tax. And so by doing a sales tax that's earmarked as a designated to the services, people, and I've noticed in Lorraine County, sometimes I watch statewide issues and how we vote as citizens. They don't go straight down on ballots, which you would think through maybe party affiliation. People in our county are educated and they read. I've seen, I thought maybe sometimes, oh, this is a, a Republican issue or a Democrat issue and it's gonna go with straight numbers. It doesn't. In our county, we, we do read and we do understand. And I've seen the numbers not go straight. I've seen them go back and forth because people do spend time in our county to read and to get educated. And that's gonna be up to us, or really it's gonna be up to the sheriff's office to go out. And we have to start educating the public on why and, and the need. So I'm sorry, didn't want, I just want to at least share.
Say something too. Well, one of the things is, is that counties our size or close to our size have much higher sales tax than us. We are the lowest in the state. We're, we're number nine in the state as far as size. We're the fastest growing, so we're gonna need infrastructure. Us three up here are frugal. The sheriff's office has been nothing but looking out for every penny, every dollar in what they've been doing. Making sure that they're spending taxpayers' money wisely. We've been looking at different things throughout the county, me personally, single bid contracts, saying, I want to see multiple bids. So there's competition so we can keep our prices down. There, there, we have been working very diligently. But by taking, when they took that quarter percent away from the county, that was a reduction. We had to reduce at one point or another what services we offer. We're doing that right now. It's painful when we have all these agencies coming into our office, asking for more money because the cost of living's gone up or the cost of whatever. So all those things combined, I, I can assure you, I'm as frugal as they get. And I'm watching everything. I tell every single agency that comes in, we don't have the money, we are watching what we spend. We are, we're gonna look at emergency services first and essentials first, and then we'll have to work within our means. And, and the bottom line is, unfortunately, they, like Commissioner Moore said, it was, it was stripped away. And it, it, it's not, for whatever reason it is, if it was maintaining, we probably wouldn't be here today.
Well, and I think every, everyone that's coming to you for. Well, and I think every, everyone that's coming to you for money needs to just be told, did you look, have you looked at everything? Is there any savings?
Sheriff's office?
Well, they're doing, they're doing a great job.
Safety forces, those are crucial things we need in our county. I've campaigned on it for three years, as far as the safety services.
Yeah, but I'm saying, all the others, that you've got all the mental health, the school, et cetera, et cetera, so everybody that's down the list.
Their budgets are cut. They're already cut.
Well, that's, I mean, and what, what Commissioner Gallagher is trying to say is, it's been going on for the last four months here. People, because they've been used to the last couple of years with ARPA funds, and we did, we had to allocate them all by the end of twenty-four, all that money. Now they're coming in, and I won't say which, which organizations that came in today, and they said, hey, here's what we're looking at. I said, I know. I goes, and I, I can't, like, we don't know what's going to happen. Number one, what if the petition drive that you're working on gets on the ballot? What if that passes? November and December is going to be ugly for everybody, okay? So we, that's an unknown that we don't know. But what is known is that we are, we have been lean and mean for some time. We're getting down to the line item for all these departments, and I, and that, the last holdout was the sheriff's office, which I'm so happy that we have a very frugal sheriff that understands a budget. And now we, I feel comfortable countywide when we, we submit this and have our, our, our meetings in July, you're going to see, you're going to see the budget that people think, and I've said it myself, oh, this is just a budget just to pass for the state. This is, this budget that we will be passing July twentieth or July fifteenth is going to be pretty close to what is going to happen. You know, and if it, and if these, if this petition drive does pass, then that's, it's going to change even more. So right now, this was all in the works before the leg started to happen with the, the petition drive that's out there. And our, our focus was, we don't, you know, with what happened last year with the property values or the property taxes, we did not want to have any, we didn't want to be involved with any assignment of any levies for your real estate.
Yep.
So we felt this should be something that should be shared by even those that are visiting our county are going to pay that tax.
Yep.
Okay, so it's, I think it's, it's a wise move in this county, the way the voters are. They read, they get educated, and I know, based on our discussions with the sheriff's office and our board, we'll be helping to educate and continually educate the public for the next, that's why we want to do this as early as we can, because we're limited on time, got to have it in by July. And it gives us August, September, and October to go out and speak to it, market, and do what we have to do to, to show the public that, you know, we are frugal and, and it is a need that we, we do need, so.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
God bless.
Well, thank you for coming in. Do you want to speak? Because you guys.
Are there others that want to speak?
Well, I've pretty much covered it, I would say.
Well, 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 Friday, okay, go ahead.
Just a list of cuts would be wonderful. If people could see everything, you said you've been working for four months, and I've read. But maybe if they could see it somewhere.
You're going to, in July, you'll see it. You'll see, you're going to see the budget, the light item, and this board, this is just me talking right now, not the board, but this is me. We, I'm hoping that we can bring in, what they use, okay, what they used to do was in November, they'd have this dog and pony show, and they'd bring everybody in, oh, look what I've saved you. And I, I, I didn't like it, and I know the Chronicle's laughing because he knows I don't like it. We, and Dave and I have these debates all the time. That's going to happen in July. It's going to be an itemized list from everybody, and it's not going to be budget hearings. It's basically going to be, this is what we're looking at, here's what we're doing. And we'll have it, I like the document that Casey came up and our department came up. It's more detail-oriented so that we can take a look at the spending, take a look at the history, and we're going to see what the submitted is. If it's going to be short, then you're going to see where the, where it's going to be short. So there, I, I expect what most people expect to see in November, December, you're probably going to see in July. That's what I'm expecting. So please come to our meetings. This is usually, we don't have this many people here, so I appreciate you guys coming in. I'd rather see a room full of people telling us their opinion, because that's what we're here for. We're here to listen. And, you know, this is, only the best idea that we came up with is say, how do we move forward? And I, I don't think the money should go into the general fund. I think it should be earmarked. And I think they, they have proven in the, in the last six months that they're, they're very frugal and they're very, they're fantastic stewards of your tax dollars.
Anybody else would like to speak?
I think the sheriff would like to.
I was just going to address one of the prior comments that came up in regards to DOGE and that acronym. We've actually created our own in the sheriff's office. We call it SOFA. It's the Sheriff's Office of Financial Accountability. And with that as well, is that we've looked at several things regarding the line item cost and programming that we want to put forward. And much of that, any new canine that we will have to purchase, and that falls under Major Tester's responsibility. Those funds have been provided by very generous citizens in the community. There's not a dollar that's going to come out of canine purchase or training of those dogs that is going to come out of the general fund. The mounted unit, which we have stressed too, that has been extremely successful in contributions that have been made to a line item revenue account that has been established with the county to be able to do that. And so therefore, again, anything in regards to veterinary care has been donated. Feed has been donated, horses, and the cost of that will come out of those funds that we have raised. So that will also be at no cost and will not see the light of day in the general fund. And so therefore, we just want to make sure that those are the programs that we put together and make sure we're working with the public. Those certain areas, canines, mounted units, they provide an essential element of safety in specific areas of the county, and due to the large number of events that myself and major tours are especially aware of, we want to make sure that those functions to operate a safe environment, especially in today's world with everything that's going on, we want to make sure that we do that, we're visible in that, and then going back to Major Tester as part of intelligence, one of his major jobs is, is to plan all of those with our local police departments. And prior to that too, we couldn't find any planning that was filed with the state of Ohio. And the Lorain County Fair, for example, is the second-largest county fair in the state of Ohio. We are required to have a security operations plan with the State Department of Administrative Services and the State Fusion Center. I have yet to find one that's ever been filed before this year, and we are working on that now, hand in hand with the Fair Board to be able to do that. So these are all things that we have to put in place to make sure that these are event-safe and something doesn't happen here in Lorain County. Lots up to them.
Need the mic.
One mic or the other?
How's this? This way I can actually turn and look at her since she had a question.
I wanted to make certain you knew, as the SOFA, I have not only looked at every part and every division of the sheriff's office and then decided and looked at every bout, every hour that is spent there to see whether or not there is accountability and that people are actually putting in an eight-hour day. My majors put in probably sixty hours a week. They're all salary. They're not eligible for overtime. I'm not eligible for overtime, nor is anybody that I've hired outside of a collective bargaining unit since we brought them in. I don't believe in that. I believe that they're, they put in a, in a contract, and the sheriff has been very accommodating to make certain that everybody who walks in the doorway is under contract, that is not in a collective bargaining unit. Number two is I've looked at every contract that we have as a sheriff's office. These are contracts that were obviously all signed well before us, and some, sometime, some of them before this commission was put in place. To review them to see if that is the best opportunity and the most frugal opportunity for the items that we are needing as the sheriff's office. So I'm reviewing every contract to make certain that they're within a, a competitive rate, much like the commissioners do for bids, and making certain that those dollars are accounted for. Looking at any excess spending that we have, all the way down to paper towels, so that I'm dealing with my maintenance crew, and every major who is sitting at this table has a budget. They all know their budget, much like you and I would in a household. They know their budget. They make certain that they are forecasting for their budget. They make certain that they know what they're spending and what they're spending it on, and that they're doing it within the parameters of the budget that they're given. So I am truly confident that they're all being good stewards, and I feel confident in asking the public for this quarter percent increase that we will maintain a, a level of, a level of service that our county is deserving.
You're welcome.
Yes, and I would like to add that there are other counties our size with budgets larger than ours. And largely because the sales tax is, is very modest. We, we're, we could go to eight percent sales tax. The state, by the way, gets five and a half percent of that. We don't get the whole six and a half or six and three-quarter percent sales tax that's charged in Lorain County. The state gets five and a half in that. We get three-quarters of one percent at the current time. This would take us to one percent. And I, and I think that we have to decide what kind of a, what kind of a county we want to be and what kind of services that we want to provide for folks. And, and the, and I would just parallel two things. The, the quarter percent is thirteen million dollars at the current time with sales, and most of it's paid for by houses and cars and other large ticket items. You know, you've got to remember, all food and so forth like that, you know, at the grocery stores, tax exempt. So it, 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 it represents a pretty fair tax when you look at who pays how much of the tax. And the second thing is, should your petition be successful, that will leave another eighteen million dollar hole in the budget that we'll have to deal with going forward because that's what we get out of the property tax for the county services. Complicated, it's inside millage and stuff, but we receive about eighteen million of our budget from real estate taxes. It would take another half a percent sales tax to replace that money. So I guess we just have to decide how we want to be taxed and for what, but, and, and it starts with what kind of services do we expect.
Yep, so we're probably living in some historic times, because that's what really that petition drive is all about. You know, how do we want to move forward as a state of Ohio, and how do you want to be taxed? Because if it's going to come back to the local level, then it's going to be up to this board, and then it's going to be up to your school boards, and it's going to be up to your cities. And, and that's basically, if you like home rule and you like that, then, then that's how, how we're going to be, but we won't know that until November. Or really August, if they can get the signatures on. But I've been told that, from Columbus, that if they don't get it on this year, they're going to continue and put it on the following year. So I know this issue isn't going to go away, but right now, what we are assigned here to do is to take care of Lorain County the best way we see, fiscally responsible, and we feel that if the money's earmarked, you know, for our law enforcement community, we feel that would, it would do quite well, as our two-nine, nine-one-one that levies have done in the past. Because our, our county, our citizens do take care of our people that are on the streets looking out for them, so.
Any other comments? Staff?
Not just Casey, knows he's got a lot of work coming up. Do we have, how does, how do we, do we close it like a?
Mr. O'Brien? You're a citizen as well as, as a reporter?
Not in this county.
Yeah.
Oh, you're not?
That's why he's so.
They spend money here, but.
Yeah, okay. That's okay.
That's a perfect example.
Yeah, you're a great example.
Tourism, let's, let's increase it.
I get paid for it, Marty.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak?
You got to come up to the mic.
Or you can yell.
I was just wondering if you're going to address, there's another issue about five-dollar increase for license?
That was, was about two months ago.
I don't know, I just got the memo.
Yeah, and.
See, Dave, no one reads your stories.
And that, that fee goes straight to the county engineer.
Yeah.
And those, that provides funds, they make matching funds to get state and federal money to repair roads and stuff, so.
So it's very similar where it's.
And we were the, we were the last county in the top ten counties of the state to put on any. And most of the other counties around us have three or four of those five-dollar fees. This is only our, this is only one.
And it, basically, it's a, it's almost like a use tax also. So in order, I think it generated about one-point-five million a year is the, the title tax, and with that one-point-five, we get, I think it's what, twenty percent? That's our twenty percent match, so we get another eighty percent in federal and state dollars for that. And what happened, there was an account that ran, that was running out of money. We could have done it the year before, but we had enough funds to go another year. And now we're at that point, and the engineer was here earlier, he was the one that was requesting it, and they're the ones that said they needed it, and we didn't feel that it should come out of the general fund. We felt that they should have their own, and we made sure that the verbiage did not cover salaries or administration fees. It was only for the use of repairs or building the roads. So we made sure that it was very specific that that.
It's just Lorain County roads, Lorain County.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Not seeing any further comment, you know, I will bring the hearing to a close. I have to make a motion. I move to close the hearing.
I'll second.
Discussion. Commissioner Rado.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Gallagher.
Aye.
And remind you that, for those that like to come out in the morning instead of the afternoon, the second hearing will be Friday morning. Ten-thirty.
After a nine-thirty meeting, if you'll come to that, so.
We adjourned.
We are adjourned.